Tabitha?
Here.
Commissioner Schreiber, also absent this evening. Commissioner Leachman.
Present.
And Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present. invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Mark Somerville. Somerville, sorry.
It's all right.
I just remember Mark is what I remember.
That's all I need to remember. Shall we pray? Our gracious Father, tonight we come to you again as we open up the city council meeting this evening. We again seek your wisdom, your guidance and your direction for our city. Lord, we thank you for those that have dedicated themselves to serve our city and to continue to keep it in running order. We pray tonight for the United States that you will help us work together as a people for the good of all. Lord, that we can solve this situation that's going on in our country. Lord, we just thank you again for your presence in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no proclamations or recognitions this evening. Personal appearances, personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling city clerk Emerald Ashlock. The Tuesday preceding the meeting, presentations are limited to ten minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. I don't believe there's any personal appearances this evening. Public comments, public comments. People who wish to address the city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during planning commission meetings. Are there any public comments? Moving on to the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, this Monday is the city commission work session meeting minutes from October 1st and the city commission meeting minutes from October 6th. Also approval of appropriation ordinance number 09-25 in the amount of $1,102,991.62 and the approval of a resolution adopting a policy concerning the transfer of deeds at municipal cemeteries owned by the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. There is no old business. New business is consideration of approval of an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a daycare center and preschool program located at 113 West Fourth Avenue.
Yes, I'm the commissioner. The property owner at the 113 West Fourth Avenue submitted an application. She has an idea of putting in a daycare center at the address. Right now she's considering half-day sessions in the mornings, Monday through Thursday or Monday through Wednesday, looking at 10 children per day. The property is currently Zon C2, so central business district. To be allowed to have a daycare center, it requires a special use permit in that underlying zoning. Our zoning regulations define a daycare center as a commercial establishment licensed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment where care, supervision, custody or control is provided more than 10 unrelated children. The planning commission held a public hearing at that meeting. One property owner did speak in favor, adjacent property owner did speak in favor of the special use permit. The planning commission considered some conditions. Those are as written part of your ordinance this evening. Six conditions, some of them obvious, some of them not so obvious. One, the facility must maintain all the required licensing to operate with Kansas Department of Health and Environment. A minimum of two off-street parking spaces shall be striped and maintained. Playground, outdoor play area must be fully fenced with materials meeting city code. Occupancy cap based on the size of the building, limited to a maximum of 10 children at any one time. Signage just must comply with our existing zoning regulations and any upgrades to the building needed shall go through the permitting process and occupancy must be granted prior opening for operation.
Scott, did you see on that number two, this is a minimum of three off-street? Did you say two or did I just hear you?
It's two.
It's two, so scratch the three.
Yes.
I was reading in the planning commission minutes and she said it's not going to be a daycare but a preschool. Is that just the daycare is the word, the verbiage you have to use for the other?
Yes, and it's children younger than five.
Sure.
And so I think there may be a hope sometime maybe to expand the services so longer duration. But we won't with a daycare center. It matches the definition of what she's wanting to do under the zoning rights.
Is this an existing home already?
It's an existing, it had been, it's a commercial building. I think its last use was dog grooming at the intersection of Fourth and Gordy, the southeast corner. So there's some vacant space in between buildings there for parking, playground. There's a site plan they drew up in your packet this evening as well, kind of the way they looked and figured out for space.
Ready for motion?
Yes.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a daycare center and preschool program located at 113 West Fourth Avenue.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Next, under discussion items, there is none. Leads us to city commission advisory board updates. Commissioner Tetrick.
Okay. The Friends of the Library, their sloppy joe dinner, I think is this Friday, right? 10:24 from 4:30 to 7:00. They will be closed early on Halloween to help with trick or treat down Main Street. They have a bunch of programs that repeat every week, you know, toddler time, preschool, storytime, builders club, so there's a ton of activities. Just check their Facebook page, but they have stuff multiple times during the day for all ages of kids and adults. They got kiddo games and all kinds of stuff, so.
And the sloppy joe suppers for Friends of the Library?
Yeah, that's who's organizing that. Yeah, yeah, but I think they have an auction before, I think that starts at 4:30 and then you can eat. Sloppy joe's really good if you've never been there. Pretty fantastic. If you like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Leachman?
Well, I'm in between meetings on both the morning, so no reports?
No reports. EFABC met last Wednesday. We discussed the scoreboard, the video part of the scoreboard. The panels are aging and if you noticed, you get black squares and white squares in the video. They are hoping that it makes it through football season for both Butler and El Dorado and discussion will pick up at our next meeting about what we're going to do. We talked about winterization. Obviously, we've had one major disaster. We don't want another one. So they talked about the winterization and they talked about the water leakage there that goes under the scoreboard. I guess it's been a problem for a while. Still trying to figure out what it is, trying to figure out what to do with it. Hopefully, we'll have a better idea when we meet again. Otherwise, Main Street meets us Thursday. Mr. Dillner?
Just a couple things. The city recent contract with Jen Kerr Savadi Home and Affairs for legislative and advocacy services. The current legislative priorities include regional water planning, refunding, special development projects or initiatives, opportunity zone designation, state farm marshal jurisdiction as well as animal shelter regulations. The opportunity zone designation, the Congress and the big beautiful bill reauthorized the opportunity zone designation. The city of El Dorado has two eligible census tracts, one that includes downtown El Dorado and the other one is western El Dorado. But the state, in the states, I should say, the governor will have the opportunity to designate opportunity zones. I think the deadline is July of 2026. So we will be advocating for one or both of those tracts to be designated for opportunity zone incentive. And so that'll be one of the things we'll be working on. The state farm marshal jurisdiction, there's been some questions about, the state farm marshal wants to kind of oversee a lot of the commercial and industrial and regulations associated with that. There's been some confusion, not only in El Dorado but also throughout the state as they want to do that in addition to the local jurisdiction. And so we're trying to figure out what that looks like from a regulatory standpoint. And then Kansas Department has also been imposing or proposing to impose regulations on the animal shelter, which would include additional fees that would have to occur for animals, basically all animals that would be brought to the shelter even if they were not going to be adopted out. So we're currently looking into that and will be advocating for those changes to the benefit of the city. Obviously, other priorities may arise throughout the legislative session once they get that underway in January. The city, actually Scott, recently attended the KDOT local council meeting, which was held in Wichita. And that's an opportunity for cities and stakeholders to provide input on transportation projects, specifically local transportation projects. But we also provide input on regional projects as well that would enhance the existing network and make it more efficient for a train station to move through the Wichita region in south central Kansas specifically. Those regional projects included construction of East Calogun Phase Two, which goes to Redover, and K96 expansion, which is Hillside to Calogun. The K254 Corridor Association also had priorities to include construction of K254 and, I'm sorry, grade separation construction on K254 at either Rock Road, Webb or Greenwich over Pat, over Pass, one of those three locations. And also development of grade separation or stage improvements at K254 and River Valley Road and K254 and Butler or Unover Road, I guess it's Butler and Unover Road. So those are the priorities that they advocated for as well. The city's primary priority with respect to the connecting link, I'm sorry, not connecting link, local council process was the water road improvements. We know that that's one of the intersections that has some of the most challenges with respect to confusion and challenges. And so we advocate for that every year that they do the local council. We envision that there will be changes in the local council process, although we don't know what that looks like. Presently, right now, everyone, cities, counties, private stakeholders can't come and voice their opinion on what those priorities are. It kind of makes it a little difficult for KOD to understand what the priorities are at times. So they're looking at that process and may make changes in future. I will be out of the office from Wednesday, I'm sorry, Friday through Wednesday, attending the ICA conference in Tampa. And so if you have any questions or anything, let's have the note show, which take care of. So that's all I have.
When you say western El Dorado, what part of west El Dorado? In your very first, opportunity zones?
The census tract, I think is from basically just west of the hospital all the way to the boundary.
Oh, that much?
Yeah, so we, the city of El Dorado has two census tracts. One primarily incorporates the downtown district. I guess there's about three because the north, north part of El Dorado is not in the census tract. So it's really six all the way down to the south city limits, all the way over to, I think approximately the hospital area, somewhere in there. I don't know the street that actually crosses over. And then the western track that I'm referring to is basically from that all the way to the west.
So what about Sixth Street North?
Yes, Sixth Street is the boundary.
Right, so, but north of Sixth Street is not in an opportunity zone?
No, north of Sixth Street would not be. Which, I mean, for further explanation, the opportunity zone is designated by the Department of Treasury at federal government level and it is, they look at a number of factors which primarily are going to be what they would consider to be distressed communities or distressed census tracts. So those areas north of Sixth Street wouldn't meet those thresholds. And so it's going to be primarily, again, the older parts of the community that meet those metrics more, distressed community.
I'm my friend here.
Executive session.
Okay, I think we're moving into an executive session. How much time do we need?
About ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under KSA 75-4319B1 for the purposes of discussing non-elected personnel and succession plans and to reconvene the meeting at, what time is it now? You said 10 minutes? Do you want me to say 6 o'clock? That's 12 minutes? Okay. At 6:00 PM in the city commission room.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Six oh three, and the meeting is back in session. There was no business conducted during the, and no decisions made during the executive session, so I would, if anyone wants to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting's adjourned.